Laura. Before the meeting gets started, um, Alan, you had a couple of people respond. I sent it out with doodles for the workshop session that we wanted to do. So I'm doing it the old-fashioned way. We've got a pencil here. I'll send this to you tonight. And you can let me know your schedule. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started then. They call this meeting in order. This is the February 8th, 2022, meeting of the City of Jefferson City Historic Preservation Commission. My name is Donna Dees. Uh, be reminded everybody to turn off their phones. So for silence any phones, and I'll let everybody introduce themselves. And Laura, wanna say hi? She's waving. Tiffany Patterson.
Gail Jones.
Alan Wheat.
Brad Shaver.
Dawn Kerschner.
Anne Stroppman, um, city staff.
Carly Rinkheimer, city staff.
City staff. Donna Dees, chairperson. Okay, and Dawn?
I'm, I'm city staff. I'm just a staff.
Well, lucky person. You're getting a whole pencil and stuff, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Trying not to get overwhelmed.
I understand. Yes, uh, we do have a forum present. And following members are not here tonight, Mae Ferenson and Stephen Hoffman. Are there any members who are disqualified from voting on an agenda item tonight? Being none. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as printed?
Some move.
Second. Spin. Motion and seconded to adopt the agenda as printed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. You also have in front of you the minutes from the January meeting. May I have a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion on the floor to approve in a second. Any discussion, amendments and so forth? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome Rachel Turner. You're fine, you're fine. Okay, uh, under our old business, I was sharing with everybody who are scheduled to try to get a work session done. I only got two responses on the doodle that I sent out. So I'm doing it the old-fashioned way. Here is a hard copy. I'm sending it down to Alan right now.
I did not see you. Didn't see it.
That's okay, well.
Sorry.
Do it this way. Just hand this mark on there when you are available and we'll go from there. Then see what we can get together and we'll hold it over at my street retreat, which is my Airbnb. It's nice and comfortable. Don't have to relax over there. Nobody will be interfering with anything else.
It does have to be open to public.
Okay, okay. They can come in, I don't care. Alrighty. Anything else under old business? Under new business, Rachel, would you like to share?
You want to say?
Very sure?
Yeah.
Old business, man, our new business, landmark award. Um, so we are supposed to be opening landmark awards now. For those that are anticipating in the COVID event updates, uh, do we want to, do you want to, do you want to open up landmark awards this year or do you want to wait?
It might be better to wait in case there are changes. I don't know if there's going to be. How do you all feel about it? You all have applied for landmark awards. I know Alan, you have. I don't know anybody else at the table who has. I know there was some surprise within the ordinance committee that land, when you're awarded a landmark award, you're supposed to go through the same process of applying for work permits, applying, you know, for changes to your building and that kind of thing. People are not aware of that. So there's gonna have to be some wording or rewording in the ordinance itself. Make sure everybody is aware of it. Feelings? You wanna go ahead and open it up this year or we want to wait a year?
I would say. She clarified. She needed conditions to verify the application.
Well, I do know the people who, I've got several buildings that are under that. I know Steve Wiley, who's on the ordinance committee, uh, mission, was unaware of it. And several other people, you know, were unaware that this is, uh, you know, what's underneath that information. And it's probably gonna be a good idea to sort of clarification to have that written. So we can bypass it this year and not award it this year. But that's your drubbing. So it's up to this commission.
The landmark awards, the application is based off of what's in the ordinance. So we can't, there's really not a whole lot of tweaking we can do as staff. So it's either keep writing what we've got.
Sign the ordinance or something.
It is. I think it's a. Yeah, that kind of thing, yeah.
You expect a lot of applications?
I haven't heard of anybody applying this year, quite honestly, but I don't know that for sure. You know, and there's a lot of folks that are in between that are working on buildings right now that might wanna put in for it. I don't know of anybody who's got one that's. They're looking at specifically.
Done it regularly. Are we gonna put a timeframe? Is it gonna be six months, three months, you know? If you're gonna decide to actually do it.
That would be at this commission. You know, if we wanna wait and just go to the next year, you know, when the majority of work, we're hoping, will be done by the commission that's reviewing these ordinances to get it in some sort of format that people are aware of it. Or we can just, you know, take, take it as it is and just make people very aware when they apply for it, that this is what they're, you know.
There's gotta be a good communication.
Gonna have to make sure, because I think it would surprise a lot of people to have a landmark award on their building. Because there's. Consensus, I'm saying, I'm hearing you say.
I think just, I just let it, just wait and not set a time yet and wait. Wait until it's.
You want it in a formal motion? Then Rachel would make it easier for staff if it's in a formal motion.
Yes.
I would make a motion to hold off on doing anything until, until we have something definite or changes.
From the ordinance commission. Motion on the floors to delay until the ordinance is looked at by the ordinance mission. Second?
Second.
Tiffany, a seconded. Any further discussion on it? Laura, did you have any input? Yes, no? Still can't hear her.
Oh, she said, I'm good.
Okay. Gotcha. She can't hear. I'm gotcha. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is historic content project.
Yes, um, so we, we're using, utilizing, uh, our status as a certified local government, we pursue historic preservation fund, funds. And efforts to go after historic context. Uh, what historic context will do is tell us the developmental history of Jefferson City. It is identified as a key component and action item within our historic preservation plan. We did receive the grant. And we put out requests or proposals, which should be included in your packet. Uh, and the best bid was Owen and Eastlake. Uh, and one of the components of their project is that they have to do two formal presentations, kind of one at the beginning of the projects where, uh, where they tell you, you know, kind of the steps that are gonna take. And then we'll have a presentation, um, at the end when there's a deliverable, uh, product. So tonight we have, I'd like to introduce you to Rory, and I don't know if it's Krupp Group. I didn't get it when we talked earlier, and I apologize if I'm butchering it.
That's okay, it's the American.
Yeah.
Okay, but you have the floor.
Okay, so my name is Rory Krupp from Owen and Eastlake in Clemus, Ohio, and we'll be doing the historic context for Jefferson City. We've already started. We're gathering information and things like that. And, um, like Rachel said, a historic context is a history of development of your neighborhood. I always like to try to sum it up as like, how did we get here? And when you look around at your built environment, why does it look the way that it does? So at the end, you'll be able to prioritize your buildings and neighborhoods, like what's historic, what's more historic, what could you use for economic development? What's in danger? What should be saved immediately? What can you hold off on? Where can you target investment? Things like that. So it kind of gives you a big picture historically of your buildings and your community. So in the past, we've done a statewide one for the state of Ohio for civil rights, which was just like random, not random, but you know, scattered site buildings. We're doing one for the city of Louisville, which is a neighborhood, uh, African-American neighborhood with an interstate highway through the center of it. To transfer economic, economic development there and tell the history of the neighborhood. We do a lot of tax credit projects, which are also districts and things like that. And a lot of them, we specialize in difficult ones where there are highways through the center of the district, or there are a lot of missing parts and buildings, and we try to stitch the story back together through things like that. So we do our old buildings really well, but we can also do like newer buildings, post-war developments and things like that. So what we try to do is cover actually everything and the good and the bad. So you can get a tax credit for almost anything. The story doesn't have to have an happy ending. Cleveland's doing in their urban renewal area right now as a tax credit project, and it is a giant vacant lot with a skyscraper in the middle. And so they're gonna jumpstart party downtown. So there are a lot of things you can do with it that are quite helpful. So that's it in a nutshell. So what we'll do is we'll look at all the neighborhoods. We start kind of at the top and get a feeling for the city, how it developed. We'll do its development pattern and go through that, do the roads, the transportation systems, the major institutions and the schools. And we'll get it down to a more granular level for like neighborhoods and historic sites and things like that within each area. We use the, um, and, uh, double ACP files a lot for like Black History things, which is really good for like, it has addresses in it. So it's really good for Black History. So we have like archives and references that we use that can really pin down things if we really have to, but we can go broad also. So we're in the broad stage right now. In about two weeks, I'll come out to Jefferson City and we will look around the city for a couple of weeks and check it out and you know, figure out what's going on historically. So. That's where we're at.
One of the things that we, we talked about earlier, we met at four, right before this meeting, um, is that we asked, what could we provide? And he said, well, old city plans, old maps, old, you know, any information that we have. And so we have, um, you know, and I didn't think about, at the time I was, I was thinking about this when I was on my way to get my kids. We, we didn't think about the other resources. Um, so we, you know, I was only thinking like what's within the city purview. Um, but we also have members on this commission that, uh, that work with historic city of Jefferson, could be a helpful resource. Uh, we have Missouri State Museum that could provide, um, some information. So when you come in town, we might kind of take you on a little field trip to all these, all these entities, uh, to, to give you access to some of the, uh, the resources that you might need.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so any, anything that you guys.
Library, our H C J library with full of stuff.
Yeah, um, so it would all, it'd all be good. So kind of keep your, your thinking caps on of where they could get some resources. I never even thought about contacting the N double local. So our local Missouri chapter or N double A C P is here in town. I don't know what they have, um, if they have any.
I don't know, they don't have any.
I was gonna say, I'm gonna show it.
A lot of us, we turned our information over to Green.
We're in, we're in the midst of doing an African-American booklet, um, right now, which will be out by the end of this month. There, we're in this editing mode right now. That'll, has a lot of information in it. And I think, wasn't there some, some stuff over at the community center? Was there still some?
Stuff I have, yeah.
Oh, you've got it. Okay.
Yeah, and I'm gonna give that to, um, Anne.
Okay, okay.
In fact, we're gonna do scanning Monday.
That could be some, some resources.
So we'll, we'll set you up.
Yeah, just a big part is just getting out and talking with people and stuff like that and seeing what's out there, so.
When are you coming in?
I think right around the beginning of March, first or second week, probably the first. So, but that won't be my last trip either.
Well, we'll get you some stuff piled up and a pile for you. And flash, bring a lot of flash drives with you.
I, oh, I have a, a bag of them, so yeah. I'm ready. Does anybody have any questions for anything?
When you go back on the, on the beginning of, you know, how do you start that process of looking at the founding of J C? Where do you start that? You know, do you just go back to records and see who's in the records or what do you do with that?
You know, as cliched as it is, I usually get a county history. I mean, there are usually some of suspect in the way they're written historiographically, but it's a good starting spot. And so I can go from there and figure out what's true and what's not true. So we go from there. So, and then the early records and stuff like that. So. But it's interesting to see how people thought their town was founded versus how it was. So that's always a good start, but.
A lot of names are probably gonna sound interesting.
Yeah. So that's our first basic step.
Anybody else have any other questions?
What are?
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. For any questions, just reach out.
Look forward to meeting you.
Okay, you too, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other new business that anybody wants to bring to the floor? Okay, under other business, historic preservation, historic preservation code revision committee update. I think our last update was the January meeting. We did not meet last Thursday, was canceled. So we didn't have anything else to do on it. And Carly, you were sharing that part of the materials you've written up that Ryan's going through now.
We, we are, yes, we are taking the opportunity, it's a blessing and a curse to not meet. So the blessing part of it is it gives us a lot of, we've, we've written out quite, quite a bit. So we're gonna have Brian take a look at it within the next week or so, and then we're just gonna keep on writing. So hopefully, the next code revision meeting will have, because we're, as far as writing goes, we're into the, um, kind of the review component, like what do you do? Now that historic district is established, how do you, you know, maintain it? And what are the rules to its, to its lifecycle? So what happens when you're doing a, you know, a new build? What happens when you're doing an addition? What happens if you're trying to demo? What happens if you're trying to put on a roof? You know, all of those, all those components we're, we're going through right now. Um, and I actually think that that's going to be an easier part. Because it's just going to be basically follow the Secretary of Interior standards and design standards that were set for that local historic district. So it's more of like, this is the process that it runs through before you can get a permit. Um, we are looking at a certificate of appropriateness process. But that's, that's, that's a, um, a preview. We still have to take it to the, to the revision committee and see what they think about it.
Explain what you mean by such.
So, so what we're looking at, and we kind of wanna create a, um, you know, this is, this is in the historic preservation plan is, it's kind of practice, but I don't necessarily think that we're interested in having every project, if you're, if you're a property that's in a local historic district. Um, and you wanna put on, and you wanna, you wanna make a repair to your building and it falls within the design standards. I don't think unless this, you know, unless I hear otherwise, I don't think anybody's interested in reviewing and making people come to a body and review something that's already stipulated. So that, we're hoping that that will be a staff review process. If it follows the design standards, will you get your permit? Have a nice day. If it falls within a gray area or there's an exception, or they want, you know, they can't afford to put on a slate roof that they've had on their, their building, and they wanna come before the H B C and ask to put on a different material, uh, that's when you would come, this body would deliberate to see if that's okay. Um, and if it is, they'd be given a certificate of appropriateness, and then they can move on and get their, 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 or permit to do their project. But that's kind of on the staff level what we're, what we're looking at as far as review. So that would be a different, that would be a different thing. So this, this body would be looking at gray areas, exceptions to the rules, you know, economic hardships, those sorts of things. So it'd be a shift from looking at everything to looking at what's, what doesn't fit the standards. Um, so that's kind of what we're looking at as far as how we've gotten it right now. But again, to take it before the code revision, so we're, we're very excited about that. I just wanted to be clear and upfront and make sure that the public knows how they're supposed to do, do their activities and how staff are supposed to do their activities.
Reviews and guidelines from another community.
Uh, we're, we're kind of borrowing from a little bit of everything.
Yeah. What, why it's a will.
You know, and it kind of, yeah, and it kind of is based off of like what, what people are, are talking about in that code revision, uh, committee. And there's been times where we went down a path and we talked ourselves out of something, and then we circle back and, you know, and that's, that's, that's part of the process. And that's why we want, why we want everybody in the same. The other thing that, that is not on the agenda, but will probably come up, um, in the code revision committee, uh, Glover Brown has been very persistent about um, getting an ordinance, uh, something codified for the foot. Um, so right now there is a historic district by proclamation. A proclamation isn't a technical historic district. Uh, so when we've talked about things, he's talking about perhaps, um, and we could do this, it's an, an ordinance that, ordinance that identifies the boundary of the exit, uh, the, of the historic district. Or what would be the historic district, but it doesn't behave like other historic districts. There's no, uh, planned use regulations to it. It would just be a codified ordinance identifying the boundaries of, of the foot. So we're, we are working with him on that, but he might come before this body and request an ordinance.
So he wants specifically an ordinance that would allow a proclamation as opposed to going through a regular historic district.
Well, so right now he has a, he, right, so, well, sorry.
I know, we've got the proclamation.
Right.
He's just talking about that business district.
Well, and that's what I told him, he had to do his homework, like where, what are the boundaries?
Because I live like on rural, which is Wiggins. And then that was done because of the, what do you call it, redistricting or whatever. So that's toward historic as well.
Right.
So is he, what is he talking about?
That's gonna be, that's gonna be, and that's where I, you know, I told him, I was like, I would be more than happy to walk you through the process of, of getting an ordinance. But, but he has, but he, he's gonna do the homework and establish the boundaries. And that will be up to this body when he presents it. If you think that that should be included in it.
Because that's part of urban, urban renewal, that area there. In fact, that was some of the first properties that we developed for minorities. After they did, I feel of the foot, but the foot was a business district from what I understand. I think we wanted raised to, so.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll see what, you know, he's gonna do some research and figure out, you know, um, but, but, you know, it's not gonna be a, you know, he'll have to come before and we'll, we'll have to do some research and figure out if that's appropriate boundaries. You know, and that's, and that's hopefully, when we get our code up to speed, you know, there will be an opportunity to expand. You know, if you have a boundary and you come, and you come in later and you wanna expand that boundary, that should be a possibility. Right now in our code, I, I don't think we can. I think we just would have to create a separate side by side, which, okay.
Yeah.
Right. Um, so that's kind of where, where that's at. Um, we also, before that, so we, we didn't meet last, or last week, it was snow. And then in January, we did have a guest speaker from Tulsa.
Yeah, we had that last week.
Yeah, and she was, she was good, and she has reached out since, um, and still kind of wants to keep that, keep collaborating, because she sees, she saw a lot of parallels between communities. And I think that's important to, to kind of look at other communities and see what they're doing with, um, with their history.
Can you give, give me her contact information?
Yeah, I thought I did, but I'm a little.
And I may have lost it all.
And I may not have sent it.
Just, just because we've applied for a grant, um, we've done the initial letter of interest in doing, because we wanna do a lot of this research on the urbanization, on how the whole thing happened in the foot and the history of all of that, all of the movement, everything that transpired. And I wanna pull some of the resources that she may have.
There was also, was MODOT not supposed to put up panels as part of the mitigation for the?
They were supposed to. But that was another group with this.
Yeah, well, they're still supposed to, if it's part of their mitigation, maybe, you know, we'll circle that.
Well, this, what, what little I know about it is they were ready, but the people who were putting some of that together were not ready. So I don't know that the fault that it's not there is MODOT's fault. It may be.
The committee members.
The committee members that were part of the, part of the discussion on the issue.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they have, I think MODOT had gathered a bunch of information, but the committee was still filtering it, if you will. And I, I don't know what happened to it either. I've not ever heard a resolution.
Okay, we'll look into that.
Anybody have any other questions about the preservation commission, the ordinance commission? Always.
We're busy.
Preservation months, anybody have anything to offer, anything?
Oh, there's that.
Since we didn't have our work session, we haven't had a train.
No, and I have not heard if we're still having our, which kind of leads into the next agenda item. I have not heard anything if we're still having the preservation conference or not.
The last I heard, we are.
Okay.
Riley is supposed to be here in March, and she said she was gonna talk to everybody at that time.
Okay.
And I haven't heard anything else about it. And, and I asked Anne about it two days ago, and she hasn't heard anything else either. I just found that I am not going to be here during.
Two years.
Long, long story.
Okay. Preservation months, I have not heard about any, any outstanding things that we wanna do, but I thought that was sort of what the work session was gonna produce. Get that together, we've got a few dates available. Okay. Anything else that wants to be brought to the table at this point?
I'm just throwing this out, uh, not really related, but related to history. The Missouri Conference on History is going to be in Jefferson City, March 16th, 17th, and 18th. So, um, I think they will be having the opening reception at Jefferson Landing if we can get all our permits and everything we have to do internally done. So that'll be fun.
That's one where I was gonna be good.
So, um, if you're interested in. So if you're interested in Missouri history, it's usually a nice conference and an interesting session, so. And it's not that expensive to go.
No, it's not.
Their registration is pretty, is pretty, is pretty low, so.
There's registration online?
I believe so, yes. If you go to the State Historical Society of Missouri, Missouri Conference on History.
We'll look like some interesting speakers, too. Anything else? If not, all in the table, motion to adjourn? So move. Gail? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Oh, good. We have new staff, listen.
Yay.
Yes. Getting her ears full with everything.
I told her it's gonna be a lot of, nothing's gonna click until about a year in, because there's a lot of information being spewed.
Yeah. And gotta make all these connections and network and all kinds of stuff.
You said, you know, people that grew up here, and it's interesting.
My way of putting it.
Thanks, Rory. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.